Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
Uh, no.
Um.
Yeah, it's definitely.
I got my hands tied up with other things I need to do. I'm literally. Check it out. Who says?
Firm.
Right. Awkward.
He's like, that makes sense.
Okay. Remember that. I don't need to do that. He's so wise.
Yes. I mean. Oh, I'll talk more generally. No, we're gonna meet on any. I mean, it's not right. How? No, it didn't happen. Everybody's moving by column, right? Stuff like that. So well, when they get figured out, then we'll.
That's Rosalba and Michael.
Right.
Got that letters that we know.
Again, a few days ago.
Yeah, it's a week ago. Barb's not here yet. So who we put Mary Ellen on the?
I made it.
Done.
You were here early. You were just in the.
I was finishing. I know. I wasn't sure if I was gonna make it. So I was trying to finish everything in the car that I had a meeting and then. I'm like, I continued it through the car so I could finish it and get here in time.
And because she's got the.
I told Karen it's happening late.
The ledger size map that you have on the bottom there, cuz that is that. Okay, then when you have those maps, we spaced it out. You share. If you, if you want to, but you also have them in the ledger size.
Hi.
So Mary Ellen's last month of this pig musical chairs.
John makes me some nice. They just keep me away from Mary. Very Mary.
Marbra.
And Francis and I can't really sit next to each other anymore either, so.
You ready? Yeah, replay. As I can.
You give me Pamela.
She's like Josh.
Does she decide?
But, yeah, but if John's not here, Josh has the handle it. I don't do. See.
Yeah. I think anybody's capable of doing it. You just have to.
Don't watch, dude.
That's the hot seat.
It's been, do you need chat? Are you looking? Did they come in? I got an email. They came in.
Okay.
What's up?
We should handle.
April twenty three, twenty twenty five, planning board meeting at seven and five. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. My creation under God in the vessel of liberty and justice.
So does Tucker take attendance or? Okay, we'll call Pamela Pettis.
Yeah.
Mary Ellen. Frances Freeman. Francis Martinville.
Here.
Michael Page.
Here.
Rose Albertura.
Here.
Chairman John Kerminski. Dismissing Barb and.
Josh.
So first on our generals, the boundary line adjustment for Scott Ripley and Gina Went, Hudson Heights. Well, so we're just adding on to it. Parcel correct?
Right, the applicant, Scott Ripley owns. What is known as lot sixteen, phase one of East River State. Set parcel three thirteen point nine dash one dash three. Um, what's being proposed to do is a lot line adjustment. Fourteen point six, six acres from the remaining large parcel and by Kansas correctly is agent to it, be doing a nerds with the lot.
And I'm gonna tell you said this doesn't change anything as far as. You have property they have to have for them. What?
No, they have, there's, the property sizes are, are okay. The one issue. Talked to Kristen about it and John, I brought it up to you this morning when you came in to review the files is that. The road. The, the. In your packet is a map of the original subdivision. This is phase one that they have developed in there. Phase two and phase three have not been done. In the original proposal. Hudson Heights. Road and Schaefer Brook Road, Hudson Heights was supposed to. In phase two, connect back into Schaefer Brook Road. And then in. And. End up with a cul-de-sac at the end. They've never developed that much. They've only developed phase one. The road stops. Right in front of this Ripley lot that is looking for this. Um. Boundary line adjustment and the town over the years has developed a turnaround there. And it's only dirt. It's not a road. Or anything. And the same with Schaefer Brook that ends kind of. The pavement ends and then the town for plowing purposes has developed this turnaround up there. So my. Comment when I saw, when I started reviewing this was. Were we creating a dead end road at Hudson Heights with no turnaround? For emergency services and the town plowing purposes. So we, I started looking into it. Melissa. In the assessor's office was able to provide me with a deed. Which Mary, I think I've given to you there that um, for where they turn the roads over to the town. But they never finished. The cul-de-sac at the ends of that either of these roads. And the roads stopped because they never went on with part two and part three of this, phase two and phase three of this development. So my concern again was we were creating a dead end at that Hudson Heights. Street by doing this boundary line adjustment, found the deed. In the deed, there is language about. The turnaround that and. Kristen, when I called her about it, she looked up the deed and she actually plotted out. Where that turnaround is supposed to be and it's not even. In the Scott Ripley's lot, it's in the previous lot. Scott Ripley's lot touches it though.
Right.
So. I don't know if it will be resolved anything yet.
I mean, essentially, you know, I, I think maybe some assumptions are made about the location of the turnaround and town's been using. An area at the end of the pavement, which is essentially right where lots fourteen and sixteen come together. Um, in speaking with Scott, um, you know, he. Was open to. Coming up with something that would satisfy the town, um, that wasn't, you know, unduly burdening on him or on his lot. To allow the town to continue doing what they've been doing. Because the alternative would be to develop that, that cul-de-sac area and it is not, not centered on the road where it is now. It's actually off that third to the right. It's basically the high point yard of the lot next door.
I, I have a question. In that deed, does the town own the cul-de-sac or is it an easement?
I would defer to Mary, but my understanding was it was a right of way for them to construct a turnaround if they chose to.
If the warranty deed will mean covenant, which means the town owns it outright.
Even, even, even though the description of it is in that schedule A.
It's the bottom of the second to last page. Here's the description of.
There's, there's, schedule A is like the third page in.
Two reasons for granted and then there's this wording in there about. You know, a right of way to construct the cul-de-sac for the town purposes. But it is, I mean, the way that it's described, it's so fierce. I mean, you know, in the lot fourteen, but. Oh, lot fourteen had already been conveyed out at that point, so.
I just didn't want it to be an issue down the road.
With Scott. That running into the key, the whole of the road outright, but then, and it's the rest of a. Um. Easement. Like that's not. Not possible to have that in the stock.
Right, the road dedication deed, so you're turning over ownership.
Right.
Until, to the very end and then I hope even that before Karen pointed out to me and I went, oh, what is this?
I don't think. I raise the question. Doesn't have anything to do with the boundary lines.
It, it doesn't, um, aside from the, the. The turnaround issue.
Once it is a value line adjustment, there's no more phase two.
I mean, there never really was. It was never, it was never approved. It was, you know, the whole plan set is filed. Um, but it, there's wording on there that clearly states it was only, only phase one was ever approved.
Correct.
Um. But, you know, essentially it's. It's not really changing anything because it's still going to be, I mean, it's gonna be a different ownership, but it's, the, the physical conditions are going to be the same out there.
The current turnaround is before the plot in question.
On paper, yes. Yeah, the physical turnaround is, is into. The, a portion of the property that would be added to Scott Ripley's lot. It was eventually able to have a conversation with his attorney, Nathan Hall, is representing both. Scott and Matt and Megan, and he's aware of the situation. I told him that, you know, your town attorney, you would probably be getting in touch with him about, you know, whatever. We decide to do here. So, you know, it's understood that if it's, you know. If this, it couldn't be finalized tonight because we need to work out the details that. You know. That's. That there's nothing really, I mean, that if this had to wait a month, that's fine, just to, to sort these things out and do the properly.
I would prefer to wait a month, um. But I also. I know. If, if we had, yes, please.
So if they save their work from tonight.
It's easier to explain.
Oh, yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Do we make a motion to table this?
No, I don't think we have to wait. Table it. We're just gonna wait till next month. I do. Yeah, make a motion.
Make a motion to table this item until next month.
I'll second.
I motion the table on line two zero two five dash two. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, Karen. Okay, don't go too far. So our next one is boundary line adjustment. Matthew and Megan Ripley and Gina. Okay, go ahead.
Um, this is a boundary line adjustment. Um, the actual. Property again is the same property we're just talking about. This is literally the other end of the property. Um, it's kind of interesting. Uh, uh, you guys actually owns two pieces of the property there. Uh, parcel three thirteen dash one dash twenty six point one, which is a very large piece. Um. According to tax mapping, it's a hundred and twenty eight acres. Um, but. A portion of that, about forty nine and a half acres of that. Plus a portion of the other lot that she owns, that you shown at sort of the very top of the map. He also owns three thirteen dash one dash sixty one. Which is approximately fifteen acres. So Matt and Megan Ripley. Are looking to purchase. Four acres at that piece, forty nine and a half acres of a large piece and merge all of it with their existing property and bundle of mountain road.
This one does involve split zones as well, but everything ends up having enough land and it doesn't matter.
We did include the zoning on the site location map too.
Okay.
Monkey shaped line. There's RT closer to East River Drive and this is RRU.
So for them, they're just combining three properties into one.
Exactly, yeah, portions of. Portion of one piece, another piece and all of what they currently own.
Okay.
Not that building on ten point one.
Correct, yes, that's the residence.
Is that part of the transfer or not?
Ten, ten point one is what they currently own. They would be adding the two get parcels to that.
Yeah, okay.
The small piece and the bigger one.
Right.
Now, these two other pieces above, right?
Yes.
Okay, and they're staying separate.
Yes, absolutely. We actually divided this off a few, a few years ago. The, the little piece of the road.
Mm-hmm.
At some, cuz it's actually Megan's parents' house, but it's the light state.
Okay.
Second to the table.
Okay.
So this is exempt from seeker, not near again. Can I count?
Correct.
And just, uh, this one, it seems less complicated. Um. The third step is, do we need a public hearing for this? I don't see a reason to.
No.
Uh, pretty simple boundary line adjustment, yeah. Big piece of property.
Yes.
I think I'm planning on building another house in the back. They just wanted the back.
Their own private kingdom.
Yes.
Yes, I mean, this is worth this area. I don't want, you know.
Anyone else have a need for a public hearing on the board? I make a motion that we don't have a need for a public hearing.
I'll second. Yeah, I'm second. That's okay.
All right, um, motion to not have a public hearing for boundary line adjustment three. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Who opposed? Motion, Karen?
I remind you, adjustment. And second that.
We got a second.
Rosal. Oh, Rosal, I was sorry. I was waiting for the say, sorry. All right. Motion to approve boundary line adjustment three, all in favor?
Yeah.
Who opposed? Motion, Karen?
One for one.
I'm gonna say, aren't you next again?
I go wrong?
This one's.
Yes.
So this is kind of two parts, right? There's two paper clips and two different things, but. The, uh, only by adjustment, I think we, we can do first. Right, Karen? Okay.
So that was on a large piece of property that is off Daily Hill Road that runs along Hill Press. And. Very close to Mountain View Lane. Off of nine. And what's being proposed is. Mr. McLaughlin wants to do a boundary line adjustment and add some property to his property. Which it's a non-conforming lot, but he went to the zoning board and got it, uh, got a variance position to not have to move the dimensional tablets of the. Um, of the dimensional tables. So he got that variance so he could move forward with the boundary line adjustment. And then, and so there's, there's. Being added to Mr. McLaughlin's and then to, if looking at this, McLaughlin's off. Mountain View, Sobels is to the left of that. They want to. Subdivide out three acres for this, for another, um, house to be built there. APA, they are, every APA, they've done a jurisdictional inquiry and APA says that it's not jurisdictional to them as long as. Both actions happen and because if, if the boundary line doesn't happen, then we're creating a land lock parcel, basically.
Yeah. Kind of non-conforming law.
Right. So it's. We either approve both. Or we, it's not gonna work.
A three point two acre lot being created should be conforming conventionally in every way.
Yes. Mr. McLaughlin wanted to add a strip to his because his present house, when they did the survey. Is right on the boundary line of his parcel. So he's adding. He wants to add this strip. To, um, give him a buffer between him and whatever happens on the next property. It's going to be developed.
Mm-hmm.
Which is about eleven extra feet.
That's it?
Thirty.
Thirty.
Eleven right there.
Long road. Right in. And. Well, that's why it's.
All right. That's it.
From McLaughlin's home. All of that. On both sides of him.
So.
Or no? Sorry?
Yeah. There's a lot going on for now.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. And when I got to the mini.
Maybe that's why we can't figure it out.
Oh, I, I got a big one right here.
You have next to be named.
He's wording them.
Yeah.
Okay, so. Here's the overall. This one is also currently owns this little honey shaped piece, which is right here.
Okay.
So he's gaining this or proposing beginning this piece. Which is a thirty foot strip here to give a little bit more of a buffer. Right now, his property line is right here, right up the corner of his deck. Um. This is the three acre lot next door. He wants to give himself a little bit more space so he doesn't have to worry about their, their yard coming right up to his house, basically.
Okay.
Yeah. And then his, it's actually his daughter and son-in-law that are on the other side. Few years ago, we added this piece over here to make his lot. Bigger, but the zoning line is right here. So this is handling commercial. Now, on this side, when he wanted to add some, these are our three. Um, or excuse me, our, our view, yes. Not thirty. Um, so he, I mean, to get three acres over there, it's gonna move this lot. And, you know. We, we went. Nine rounds of the zoning board to convince him that this is. Worth granting a variance, so I'm hoping you agree.
And they approved it.
Does anyone on the other end need that explain what's happening?
Okay.
Yeah, does everybody understand?
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Bet it like previous and scale something.
Yeah.
You're seeing a small here, but. Yes.
So.
We pick that home, sure. Okay. You know, I don't have that.
So then we gotta sit down for the other part.
They will. I mean, if it works.
So, and we gotta do this first.
Yeah.
So. This part. Well, the next part, you have to prove this first to get to the second thing. That doesn't mean we're gonna approve the second. No, you gotta prove this first cuz you can't get the other one approved unless we do this one, correct, Karen?
Can't even look into.
Well, you could.
Right, but without approving this.
But.
Uh, map. Is. Yeah. It's all, yeah, it's all right there.
As we get into it, you'll understand. All right, so as far as this one, see there's eager exempt. The non. Jurisdictional letters on file. The next step would be, uh, if we need a public hearing for this boundary line just.
Looking at this certain.
Now.
I think we need to public it just with boundary line, just for this piece.
Question.
Uh, yeah, who does if? If they do, if they. Don't, if for some reason they didn't approve the subdivision part of this. Is, is Mr. McLaughlin still gonna gain this land?
Yeah, they're, they're separate transactions with the Sobels.
Okay.
But this will still happen. It's just the other part. Well, we'll do it with that after we finish this. Okay.
What creates the land lock parcel?
If we do this, if, if you do the subdivision.
Oh, without.
But it, yeah, it'd be two, it'd be very.
Do this first, we can't create.
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
So I make a motion that we don't have a need for a public hearing.
Second.
We should not have a public hearing for two zero two five boundary adjustment one, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion, Karen? Questions?
We need to keep the map out.
I also make a motion to, uh. Affirm this plat, we're boundary line adjustment. Approve this plat, we're boundary line adjustment. Speaking of that next thing. Motion, okay, Tuesday, two-five boundary adjustment one, are in favor?
Uh, yeah.
Who opposed? Motion, okay. So I will keep your laps out. The big ones. So Ken, you wanna explain this one?
Yeah, they want to take out three acres. That joins where you just proved that boundary line for a house and it's in the R U zone, so they need three acres. There is town water available. In that area. People along Hill Crest. Get it, people along Bailey Hill have town water, people on. Mountain View Lane have town water. I talked to Ronnie Duel, water superintendent, and he said that the line. Water line going into Mountain View, he thinks is a two-inch line. He's not totally sure. Where they want to connect. The water. Or if they're gonna do a well, I mean, they haven't talked about it well. But, um. Because. The pe- there are already houses being supplied with town water off these lines. He's not totally sure that there's enough. Water. To supply.
Hmm.
A house. Because of the size of the line, they're undersized lines. The other. The other thing is, is that to get to this property, it's gonna, it's an easement or right-of-way. So it takes it into a major subdivision again. And I, I was looking at, at the book and I didn't know whether or not. The fact that the nearest hydrant. Is out on Nine End. Or what, where is it up on the other end? Off Bailey Hill Road, Tucker? Did we look at that end?
Uh, yeah, it's, so it comes off of Bailey Hill to Hill Crest and then the other road is down from Mountain View up to, uh.
Fire hydrant is out on Nine End and in the subdivision book, it says. We should have a fire hydrant. It's not more available every five hundred feet, but I asked. Mary to look at that and she. We don't, that should not be a consideration in this. Is that what you're telling me?
I believe it's for the county to determine. No?
It's in our subdivision book. I don't know.
Where?
Page fifty-four. I think it's fifty-four.
Yeah, you got it.
So with the water supply, they determined by the Department of Health, though, right?
No, they don't need Department of Health approval because they don't fit under that realty subdivision.
Oh, so they're not doing enough lots.
Okay.
It does say five hundred feet. Apart, apart. So between Nine End and way over to the other one.
Yes. We're the one at Nine End is definitely closer. We did measure. Over to this lot and it's, it's under five hundred feet to the nearest point.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
So it says.
The map is four forty to like.
Does it cover the other piece of property? Well, it must if it gets to that, right? There are no nine ends down this way. Yeah, it's all four to three.
Yeah.
So that the diagram is right there.
So here's another thing about this. This map is still, it's never gonna get with us. This is the next, this is solid. I mean, uh, or could always weigh. Uh, wire, this is also one forty-two. You have two eighty. From this point, they want to.
On our part, but then when they go, we're, oh, this might be an issue.
Three forty-two, I believe.
From the lot to.
Four forty, the hydrant might leak out. So we measured this down and over, there is a middle here.
Okay. See the four forty, the hiding, the cavity.
But there is no six-inch minute in there. So what about the other houses?
Yeah, and they said it's less than five hundred feet from the hydrant on Nine End.
It's less than.
It says, this rhythm is mapped here.
Oh, okay, so then it's, it's within five hundred feet of what I heard that.
So we, we're good by sixty feet.
So there's no issue? Or is it now it isn't? There's a potential that they won't have water pressure if they were to cut to the.
Yeah.
You need a six-inch line, you're only two inches. So that would be.
As well.
If that's. But I know, not hydrant, but they want to connect to the water for their house.
I don't think that's progress. Well.
For the hybrid.
Right, and we're saying that, given that's too much line. He's not sure that there's.
What about the water to my property?
They're proving contingent. We would have to do a contingent on. Sufficient water supply that the town accepts. Provide water versus.
If they don't have, if they want town water. And it's a private road. And there's not sufficient water. To supply that house, they would have to run a new, larger line and it would probably be at the owner's expense.
Probably, it would be at the owner's. And add, uh, like, uh, what is it called? Like a pump house to give it more pressure necessary?
I don't, I don't know any of that.
That would be at the discretion of the property owners and either pay for the water line upgrade or just drill a well.
But I wanna come back. Drilling a well is an option.
For a larger water line.
Or the full of.
Hmm.
Those six full of. They seem to do all of them.
Yeah, they do their job.
I think that's an easy one for you. See, there's gonna be one way or another, so it's not something, right, hold it off.
Yeah, I think, as long as the, the town. Is guaranteed not to be responsible for having to pay for a water line upgrade.
They are ever on private property, so.
I mean, they are never required, sometimes people slip through, though.
So there's no liability. From that perspective.
Probably had to make that a condition, though, right?
Yeah.
So it's obvious, so they don't think, well.
Want to make that requirement, then yes, you have to make it a condition. You can also waive it. Like you waived some of the other requirements for the last subdivision we did. It's, it's up to you guys. But I think the water pressure is a big deal. In the town's state, if there's water pressure, there's not, there's the option.
Yeah, if they want it, they'll pay for it.
If not, they put wells in.
So if somebody wanted to build a house on a piece of property that already existed. And was somewhere near town water, would they not have to still go through the process of determining capacity if they're going to. Now, water supply? That, something that is dealt with when you get to the, the building phase? No idea. How the county typically handles that stuff, but I don't know if that's part of their process.
Usually, there's always been enough.
Right.
It's usually, we haven't run into one where it's been questioned, questionable. Um. Let me go back to. Till we use. Is, if it's utilized, the system shall be designed with adequate moon size. And fire hydrant water supply to make the plans for fire. Each subdivision is located within the Lakeview Zarn Water District. It shall be required that each lot within the subdivision have a separate water connection. Leading from the water main to the adjoining lot. That's on page fifty-five.
What if there's no water? How, then they may drill a well?
Are they allowed to drill a well?
It's not, every place in our town has water. But in some ways, would we really? Worry about that part of it because. Maybe then I have the.
Well, we do worry about it when it says it shall be.
Okay.
It doesn't. But again. Maybe you can make that. I don't know.
Hmm.
I mean, they. No one's had the conversation with them about it because. I just found out Monday myself, so.
I don't see, they're, they're gonna need water, so either the line's not adequate, they have to pay to upgrade it, or they put wells in. I guess what, so.
They're not allowed to. They're saying. They have to connect no matter what.
She said, yes. They're within.
They're not sure.
Fire hydrant, so.
If it's available, they must use it, so they're not.
Is that right?
Okay.
So water supply for the house.
That's a different story.
When you have water.
They determine that the fire hydrant is within four hundred and forty feet of the slot, so. They're okay there.
Because think about.
Can I ask you a question? Going up, heading our galley over. How, where is the water at the galley?
Right.
And you would.
You're.
The fire hydrant is at Galley.
So if they.
It goes up, but, you know. Go like standing on.
So. We're, we're covered with fire hydrant. But they ask.
But the fire hydrant, closest fire hydrant is on Nine End down by Mountain View.
So we've already done that. I'm just saying, though. Wait, what is this?
Talking about water pressure?
Is this shaded line? Is this shaded?
Cause it's only a two-inch line.
No, but who cares?
Yeah, there's a.
Cause it wouldn't have enough water pressure for all the rest of the houses. It drains the pressure.
This is talking about. Just meeting the fire.
Airflow, yeah.
So they need. So Bell, so.
This is the proposal of the water heater.
Just, you don't need to.
I just wanna make sure that it's. Me, so I'm trying to make it. Make sure that, whether we decide yes or no.
Against it, so it's gonna be right here.
What if the new house?
Way over. Yeah. Certainly before. Five hundred feet. Right. Yeah.
No, 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 it's, it's. The line comes up to here. It's already surfacing this house here. But you're only.
But I don't think we, I don't think there's a requirement for the size of a. Um.
For the size of the line.
Correct. I think that size of the line is specific to.
To the fire.
That's true.
Don't they already have town water on this piece of property?
Yeah.
So they would just go on a few more feet.
Yep.
Yeah, that's.
And then they'll figure it out. Do you think they would have to do, I guess, is. Pay from. For their house.
Yeah. It's not an issue. Thank you. Thank you.
So. Still has water, town water.
So.
So they will just have to pay from. World of Water, which is the town. To. Which is still under five hundred feet.
The five hundred feet only comes into play on the fire.
Right.
We've already.
They, they can still connect to the other property, correct?
Yes.
And. They do have to connect to the water main. I mean, that's.
I mean, the house, the house next to it already has water, town, and water. So it's just a few more feet to the next lot. It's still gonna pay for it, but.
They would pay.
Yeah, they're aware of that. We talked about. You know, connecting utilities. We talked about, you know, improving.
But they wouldn't have.
Short section of whatever that's called there. To get to either driveway. They understand that they're gonna have to, that, that, that that's on them essentially, cause they have to be able to get. You know, concrete truck in there if they're gonna build a house and they have to be able to, you know, have it. Be substantial enough to get the fire truck in there, all those things, and they know this already and they've already accepted this.
All right, I guess both things are nonissues.
We do have a short form, a biannual assessment form.
I have time to talk here.
Yeah, we, yeah, let's, and we get to the major.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but look. It's a defensive being a major.
It's accessed by an easement or a right-of-way.
Uh-huh. So it seems to be conveying. So these are, is it a private road? Or is there no difference?
But I don't understand, I mean, they've seen that they're having this piece. What are they trying to do? This part of the.
Yeah, they want to settle.
One part of it. Somewhere around here, they have to open up. Three years to build. I know. This is both forms of. So we're going to, uh, we're going to record the short form before we go. We're going to. You have to be in the record of the short form.
I gotta do.
My suggestion is schedule a public hearing. Repeat. We defend, he said. We did a. What you said, we already did that. Make sure you all review that part one. With now on your public hearing. And we don't have to review it on the record, I'm gonna just do part two.
Okay.
Okay.
So at this point, we do have to talk about public hearing. I make a motion that we. Have a public hearing on May twenty-eighth, next month, at seven P M. Is there anybody in need?
I'll second.
All right, motion, uh, set the public hearing from May twenty-eighth at seven to five P M. Are in favor? Who opposed? Motion, okay.
It's gonna be. Supposed to be.
Any.
Three point. And where do they sink? Why, why is it not? If this is a road, if there's no road.
Very fast speed, but it's. Nice meeting, so they're here. That's my friend. You want me to keep them for you? Yeah. Then I can find them back.
Well, make sure, well, boy. Make sure everybody saves your paperwork for next month, the public hearing. Okay.
Do you think we'll look early tonight? Do you wanna come?
I'm hoping this is. Wait a minute, a little different. You're the wrong person, she needs. This one's been around for a little bit. Now. They've. Yeah, I don't know.
I am.
I'll just stand up and point if needed.
I didn't get the evergreen stuff. Here. He sent it to me. But it wasn't your packet, but it wasn't mine.
I, I'm telling you, I have, I struggle with you on that.
I got it right now.
So it's all right here.
Thank you. I did have it in my email.
Okay, this is one of your states, which you guys wanna make some changes to it? Um. Why don't you go ahead and tell us about it?
Sure, so I'll give you a quick synopsis, cause it's been a little while since we've been here. Um. This is a subdivision that was designed and approved back in two thousand nine, and for whatever reason, it wasn't built. And so in that time period, the Department of Health, uh, approval expired. And also, it seems that whatever documentation of the town's approval just couldn't be found, so. We were, we were kind of based with starting the process over, and that started in November of twenty-two. Um, and we've been through. S- the process ever since. Um, you know, we've, we've got the seeker completed. Uh, the long form has been completed in the process of circulating it through agencies after it was approved. The D E C said, hey, wait a minute, it looks like there's wetlands here. Apparently, they weren't there in two thousand nine. Um, so we have now then started the process of getting a full review from the D E C. Um, the Army Corps issued no permit required. The D E C has issued a wetland permit. Um. Uh, sorry, backing up a little bit, we did. Uh, the, the two thousand nine approval, we are making some tweaks to. We changed the road design slightly. We changed the stormwater design, but all the lots themselves are the same. So Gary Robinson's pride, uh, designs for the individual septic systems and all the individual lots, we're not changing anything on it. All just the, the, um. It's shared infrastructure, really. Um. Uh, and we did have to make a modification to the road design as a result of the wetland permitting. They required this little kink in the road that right before it, it intersects with Call Street. Not, would not be my choice to design it that way, but we were kind of forced to do it that way. Um, this has, this project's been engineering reviewed. Uh, Cedarwood, um, did the review. We've responded to those comments. Uh, we've done a full, uh, stormwater. We've done a full stormwater plan, again, from the modified stormwater design. And actually, the owners just recently had it transferred over to the new twenty twenty five general permit. So that that's all been established. The preliminary plat was approved back in June twenty four by this board. And we've been going through the Department of Health review, and we are. This close, I was really hoping we would have their signature on a document for today. But at the last minute on Monday, they wanted some more documentation, they wanted to. See a letter from the town that they would, a letter of intent to take over the road and. That that's another item that's been worked on. The the owner still would like to pursue town taking over the road, but if that doesn't happen. They'll establish a homeowners association to. Be responsible for maintaining that road and the stormwater infrastructure, so either way, there's a there's a path forward here. I tried to. Reach out to Department of Health and explain that, but I didn't get a response by tonight's meeting, so. And and the survey, the final plat has been produced as well, I mean, that's submitted in the application. So we're we're here to find out if it's possible to receive final plat approval. There there was a public hearing on this back around the time when the preliminary plat was approved, and that public hearing was closed. There really haven't been any changes to the design since that time. But if it's, you know, if it's possible for the board to approve this contingent on us getting that final signature from the Department of Health, that would be great. And if not, we'd like to just kind of get a bullet list here of, you know. What what's, what what's remaining that we can do, you know, to finally get this thing? Done so that they can get going on it. So with that, I didn't go into any real details, because it's been in front of you a number of times already, but if there are any specific questions about the design or. The process.
Is boundary line adjusted to four and five? On the map. We were discussing about how we could incorporate. Number, number four. It is on the map anyway.
The lot that's developed with Mrs. Kearsard's house, is that lot number six?
Yeah, I think it is.
Yeah.
You remember that?
Yeah.
Yep.
And. The map six that you, preliminary plat that you approved back in June of twenty twenty four. Had on them lot eleven, it has the line to change. To cut off that keyhole of lot eleven that ran parallel to the road. And incorporate that into the road lot, that was on that preliminary plat that you approved back in June. And at the end of the cul-de-sac where they've got stormwater there. That was also shown on the preliminary preliminary plat that you approved back in June. Changing those lots, I I without opening up the big map, I don't know what numbers they are, one, two, three. Four, five, six, seven, eight and nine, or the two right at the end of the cul-de-sac, is that correct?
Yep.
So eight and nine, the boundary lines changed from the original subdivision back in the two thousands. But it was drawn this way on the. Preliminary plat that you approved back in June.
Yep, and then that's what. Daryl Land surveying based their final plat on as well. I'm sorry, you asked about lot six, so. There is a house there now, and that driveway does cut across where lot five is, so that driveway is gonna need to be moved, so that it fits within that strip. To lead it up to Evergreen Drive.
Are there certain lots, from what I understand, where they're not gonna build houses?
Lots one and two are not buildable because of wetlands.
So number three, four, eight, nine, that's, they're all gonna have houses.
Correct.
Okay, I guess I was, I thought that they were not, but.
Well, lots one and two are written. I think on the map is not.
It says right on the design plans, not for development, yes, and, you know, I guess the owners are just gonna hang on to those lots for now. Yeah, they're they're just gonna hang on to those lots for now, they know that there's, that they can't build on them. And so they wouldn't be able to sell them as building lots. And that was, I mean, lots lots one and two, that was known not to be developable back back in two thousand nine, too, they weren't, they were marked as not for development back then, too.
Why is lot eleven going smaller?
Lot eleven used to include the area between Evergreen Drive and the boundary of the development. All the way up to Call Street, it was that L-shaped section there, and we realized that we needed that space for the stormwater treatment system, and then after. Working with D E C on the wetlands, we also had to align the road to kind of go into that space a little bit. Plus, it didn't make any sense for that to be a part of lot of eleven, lot eleven, so we just thought it was a lot more practical and it would help. You know, keep all the shared infrastructure in the road right away, if you want to call it that.
Okay.
And obviously, it still meets the minimum lot requirements.
Right.
What's something about this, that the width of the road and the turnaround? And the amount of space, wasn't that what was done? It's they've converted it all to what we.
Right, yeah, Ron gave us some feedback on what he wanted to see for lane width and shoulders, and we made those adjustments.
So you've actually had to make it wider for his.
Yep, well, the overall didn't end up being wider, we just changed. Where the lane and the shoulder met, but the overall paved width is still what was.
I just remember that.
Yep. Yeah, we did ask for a variance on that, it with the grades, and actually, after coordinating with D E C and putting that little. Loop in, that actually made it more compliant than our. Because because by stretching it out just a little bit, decrease the percentage just a bit.
So I do just want to mention that during final plat approval. The board has to consider the bond requirement. So. It can be phrased the same way that we did it for. Wasern Woods, which is developer will furnish a bond. Before the commencement of any construction on the subdivision sufficient to cover the complete construction. Of the infrastructure, including but not limited to the completion of the roads. And stormwater systems, and then it'll be up to them. To send the town an estimate of what those costs might be, and then have it approved by the town's engineer before construction started.
Can can they approve this as a final without? The town having decided, giving them a letter of intent to take over the stormwater, because they said that they will do homeowners. If they don't do that. Homeowners Association.
Correct, I mean, so whether or not the town board decides to take over their roadway is not really the planning board's concern. Because then it's up to them to figure out how they're gonna maintain those roads.
But they do have to have a bond, as far as one of the conditions, correct?
They have to have a bond, yes.
And it would be the town.
You don't have to have that bond until they're ready to start construction.
And it's based on the town's approval, whatever they want it to be, correct?
Yeah, so they'll send us an estimate, and then the town engineer will look at it.
And then the holder of the bond would be the town?
Yeah, yes, sorry, yes, because it's if the developer walks away, then the town doesn't have to spend any money on the infrastructure.
We have to have another public hearing?
No, you do not.
If if this final plat is in subsequent agreement. Substantial agreement with the one that you approved, you can waive the public hearing.
Which I believe you said is exactly the same.
It's basically the same, I mean, I I gave you a letter-sized copy of the one that you approved. And you've got other maps in front of you, and they're really, we even looked at the road. Where the beginning of the road changes, and it's, it appears to be basically the same on both maps. I I don't see much difference. Is there any difference?
No, there's no difference, and just for. Interesting sake here, the first public hearing was open for almost a year. I know, we were trying to get our ducks in a row in that meantime, but.
Making a motion to waive.
I'll second it.
Public hearing.
Alright, motion to waive the public hearing for the Evergreen State Subdivision, all in favor?
To make sure we have the conditions, right?
Condition besides the bond.
The D O H.
D O H approval, because you didn't get the alert, correct?
No.
No.
I mean, I.
I can tell you that we're very, very close, I mean, they have also assured me that there are no, they're they're completely satisfied with the technical, and they were just. Actually, the first thing they told me is that they were coordinating with the Warren County Clerk, because this was filed back in two thousand nine. And now we're making some minor adjustments to the lines, and they just want to make sure it's filed properly. And then the other thing was just getting clarification on the road, so.
No, do we need to word for words say the bond language that Mary said?
You don't have to, I'm gonna send it to Karen over email, but I would definitely put on the record that that's what you want.
Prove the final class under the condition. First one, the developer will furnish. The bond according to the wording. With Mary, and the second one is with D O H approval. Did I miss anything?
No, I second.
I do just, you'll have that within a hundred and eighty days, right?
Absolutely, and if not, I'm gonna go stand over Kevin Kenyon's desk until he signs it. And as I mean, as far as the town road goes, they they still want to pursue that, and Karen, I can go to the May sixth meeting. So so I'll coordinate with you on on making that happen.
You need to do a roll call vote?
Yeah, let me do a roll call. Alright, so motion to approve the Evergreen State Subdivision conditional to the conditions. Separated by Tony Springer.
Yes.
Francis Bondell?
Yes.
Michael Page?
Yes.
Rose Abatura?
Yes.
Mary Ellen Ellison? Yes, and Daniel Pettis?
Yes.
And Chairman John Kremsky? Alright, all in favor of motion carried?
I know they want to get going on the on the access road, and then they'll be able to sort the houses, or the parcels up up for sale. But they they kind of have to get that shared infrastructure first.
Okay, I know a couple properties already have different names on them. Does that mean anything, like?
Those aren't part of the. Yep, those are abouters. Thank you very much.
I said, try not to let it go so long this time before. Oh my god.
Oh, yeah?
Six minutes.
Those were emailed to you, I hope everyone looked at them.
Any other new business?
Business I have, as I received a call from Matt Huntington. That Tom Reed is considering coming back to his subdivision up on Hidden Valley Road again. And wanted to know if any changes had been made within our rules on the road requirements. And we had a conversation about that. And I don't know where that's going to go, but he's going to talk to his client and get back to me again. So so that you're aware that maybe that is in front of the board one day sometime.
Would be a brand new application, correct?
Yes, it's a brand new application.
Oh, really?
This was the application where they walked away because they couldn't handle the twenty eight foot.
Right.
Which everybody else is.
Yeah.
I'm putting in my two weeks' notice right now.
Anybody else? I make a motion that we adjourn.
Thank you.